Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to this public hearing of the New York City Rent Guidelines Board. This is the fifth of five public hearings to consider comments concerning proposed rent adjustments for renewal leases for apartments, lofts, hotels and other housing units subject to the Rent Stabilization Law of 1969 and the Emergency Tenant Protection Act of 1974. These adjustments will affect renewal leases commencing between October 1, 2016 through September 30, 2017. I will now take roll call. Please respond if present. Harvey Epstein. He's here but not... Oh, there he is. Okay. Stephen Flax. Shayla Garcia. Cecilia Jose. Sabeel Roman.
Present.
Helen Shaw.
Present.
Mary Seraphy. Scott Walsh. Kathleen Roberts. That's me and I'm here. Let the record show that we have a quorum. The next meeting of the board will be the final vote, which is scheduled to take place on June 27, starting at 6:30 PM. It will be held in the Great Hall at Cooper Union, 7th East, 7th Street, at the corner of 3rd Avenue in Manhattan. Directions to this meeting can be found on our website, nycrgb.org, in the About Us section, Meeting Schedule, and as always, there are copies of our meeting schedule here today. To board members, please note that drafts of both the hotel and apartment explanatory statements are in your folders. They're not? Okay. Have previously been revised to you. We request your comments and/or suggested additions to the statements no later than the morning of June 24. Revised drafts will be sent to you via email by Wednesday, June 22, reflecting additions resulting from the public hearings. Any questions, please see Andrew. All right, before we begin our hearing, I would like to read some of the rules and parameters for those who are testifying before the board. Each speaker will have two minutes to give his or her testimony. In the event that large numbers of people wish to speak, the chair reserves the right to reduce the allotted speaking time. The clock will beep once when the speaker has 30 seconds left. I will attempt to alternate speakers between tenants and owners, but this may not always be possible. Speakers must confirm their presence with the RGV staff at the registration table located near the entrance of the hall. Speakers will not be called if they have not checked in at the registration table. Tonight, we have a Spanish interpreter. When registering to speak, please notify the staff if you would like an interpreter. I will try to call several names in advance. If your name is called, it's advisable that you move toward the front of the auditorium. If you have materials to distribute to the board, you should give them to the RGV staff sitting at the sign-in table near the entrance. And we ask you, please, to try to stay within your allotted time so that we can get through as many speakers as possible. At this time, I'll ask our interpreter to interpret what I've just read to the...
...announcements for the la creditices of the laudanias of the public, for the laudanias of the public, and how it will commence our reunion. La presidencia quiere dar la vida a todas las personas en la audiencia de mayor en las directrices de la junta de rentas. Esta es la quinta audiencia pública que debemos considerar los comentarios concernientes a los ajustes de rentas para renovación de arrendamiento y contrato de apartamentos, hoteles y casas que están sujetos a la estabilización, la ley de estabilización de 1969 y la ley de protección de emergencia para inquilinos de 1974. Estos ajustes estarán en efecto para renovar los contratos de arrendamiento, empezando de octubre de enero de 2016 hasta septiembre 30 de 2017. En nuestro próximo reunión de la junta se hará el último voto, que va a llevar a cabo en 1:27, y empieza a las 6:30. Esto se va a llevar a cabo en el Rei Hall de Cooper Union, en el 7 de este de la calle 7, en la esquina de la tercera de Lina Amada. Direcciones para esta reunión se pueden encontrar en nuestra página de web, y toda información sobre esta sección, y también el intitulado de esta reunión. Y como siempre, hay copias de estas reuniones que están en intitulado aquí en el día de hoy. Antes de comenzar esta audiencia, quiero leer algunos de los reglamentos y parámetros para estas personas que están testificando ante la junta. Cada orador tendrá dos minutos para dar su testimonio. En el evento que hay un número muy grande de personas que quieren hablar, la presidencia se reserva el derecho a reducir el tiempo permitido para hablar. El reloj va a hacer el sonido una vez estén cerca de los 30 segundos. La presidencia va a intentar que se alternen los oradores entre personas que son inquilinos y caseros, pero esto no siempre es posible. Los oradores deben confirmar su presencia con el personal de la junta de directrices y la registración en la mesa de registración, que está en la parte trasera de la sala. Oradores no pueden ser llamados si no han sido escritos en la registración, en la mesa de registración. Cuando se dequiste para hablar, por favor, notifique si necesita un inter. La presidencia también va a llamar unos cuantos nombres, y si su nombre es llamado, por favor, muévase hacia el frente del auditorio. Si tiene algún material a distribuir, la junta, por favor, déselo al personal de RGV, que está sentado en la parte trasera en la mesa de registración. La junta le pide, por favor, que se mantenga en su tiempo permitido para que podamos llegar a tantos oradores como podemos.
Thank you. Our first speaker will be Scott Stringer, the Controller of the City of New York.
Thank you, Kathleen Robertson, distinguished members of the board, for the opportunity to testify at this important public hearing. And I'm actually very glad to be speaking here in the heart of Harlem. For years, tenant advocates have pressed for an uptown hearing because working people shouldn't have to go downtown to have their voices heard. So I commend the RGV for answering this call, and I think everyone appreciates the joy here tonight. Could we just give them a big round of applause? Rent regulation is a lifeline to New Yorkers who are struggling to make ends meet. It's one of the central pillars of our affordable housing stock, spanning 1 million units of affordable housing across five boroughs. And now more than ever, in a time when more than 57,000 New Yorkers are homeless, we've got to keep this precious resource affordable. Tonight, 57,000 people will sleep in a shelter; 23,000 are children. So, tonight, I want to talk to you as the city's chief financial officer and look at some numbers. And the numbers this year are very clear. From 2013 to 2014, net operating income was 3.5%. The 10th consecutive year, income has increased for building owners. Meanwhile, cost to operate rent-stabilized buildings went down, led by a staggering 41% drop in fuel costs. At the same time, 1/3 of city residents are paying more than half of their hard-earned wages towards rent every single month. It all adds up to one simple conclusion: This board should vote for another rent freeze. Some of us remember in 2008, when building owners warned of rising fuel costs and convinced the board at that time to push through big rent increases. This year, fuel costs have plummeted, so it would seem only right that the same logic should apply, and the tenants share the cost of savings this year by at least staying even. Our city is investing billions of dollars to build new affordable housing, but it will be years before those new units are online. New Yorkers need immediate relief, and this board can provide immediate relief again to thousands of New York families right now. So I urge you to make history again, and vote for a rent freeze, and send a message that New York City is doing everything in its power to build an affordable future for our city. I'm going to submit, in the interest of time, a more in-depth testimony of some numbers that reflect some of our examinations.
Thank you. We have copies of that.
You have the right?
We do.
Well, thank you very much for giving this up. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me just ask if there are any questions for the Controller.
Thank you very much, Controller. I really appreciate you coming and supporting a rent freeze this year. And what would you say to those owners that we hear? We've heard maybe a half dozen to a dozen small property owners saying, you know, "It's destructive to the housing stock." You know, what do you say in response to them, who say, "Well, rent freeze is not a good thing for the city"?
Well, heating prices are at a 10-year level, and since 1994, New York City's lost at least 151,000 rent-regulated apartments. 8,049 units were deregulated in 2015 alone, under high-rank vacancy deregulation of 29% from the previous year. We had an affordable housing crisis. When I became Controller, I think the first economic analysis I did was to look at the housing stock. And what we found was something very frightening. Over a 12-year period, we've lost 400,000 apartments that used to rent for $1,000 or less. In that same time, we've seen a homeless explosion. And many of you who have expertise in this field know, it is not easy to build affordable housing. It's very costly, problematic, and look at the challenge the mayor is facing with his affordable housing plan. It takes a lot to do this. So it makes sense to preserve the housing we have, especially when the numbers dictate it.
One of the things that we hear from owners in particular is that, at the same time that they are being asked to hold the line, so to speak, in terms of the rent that they're collecting, that property taxes are going up astronomically. And I think virtually every owner we heard from expressed the view that the city, on the one hand, is asking them to bear the responsibility for maintaining affordable housing, and at the same time, is not giving them any tax relief from rising tax assessments, essentially.
We are not here, and I certainly... You know, part of this testimony every year is sort of a tenant versus landlords. But, look, I think small property owners are struggling, and many of our communities as well. That doesn't mean that we should punish the people who live in their buildings. But if they want to open their books and start sharing their information, I would be the first to sit down with a magnifying glass and take a look at it. But they don't open their books, and we have to open our data points with the tenants who are behind me tonight. And I can tell you very clearly, if the numbers say we have reduced costs, that it makes sense just to hold the line. That's what we're saying. There's been no indication overall that you're seeing tremendous increases, but we have seen, prior to this administration, we have seen increases that perhaps were too high when numbers suggested otherwise. But this is a real opportunity to keep the status quo. Let's see where the economy is a year from now. We do know that we have a housing crisis in the city, and we're losing rent-regulated apartments. Albany doesn't help or honor home when it comes to this. And I'm here tonight to tell you that if you walk around this community, and many of you have, you can see a community where people invested their sweat equity in the community, and now they're seeing luxury development. And the people who built the community, they're hanging on in their rent-regulated or rent-controlled apartments, and they can barely make ends meet. And we want a city for everybody, and this, tonight, is an important vote or a discussion we have.
Thank you. Any other questions for the Controller?
What do you think it says to the city for us to, you know, vote for a rent freeze?
I'm sorry, say it again?
What do you think it says to the city for us to vote for a rent freeze? I'll answer that one.
What message are we sending here if we vote for a rent freeze? What message are we sending to the tenants out there?
What you're saying is you recognize that your vote reflects the numbers that have been presented, especially to fuel costs. You are doing your due diligence in terms of trying to strike the right balance, and I believe after our analysis in my office shows that this is a time when we can afford not to raise the rent. Look, there may come a point, the city, you know, the city economy never stays the way it is. Something happens, and there may be a call to have a higher rent increase, and the tenants will have to bear that burden, as they always have. But we are at a point in time where, fortunately, the data suggests that landlords are making a profit. There is a process that the RGV engages in, and I think this would send a message of fairness, level happiness, and some sanity in this process.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Any questions for the Controller?
I got a good one, Neil, it's a whole thing.
Thank you very much. All right, our first three speakers will be William Gooden, James Jones, and Mika So first, William Gooden. Good evening, Mr. Gooden.
Good evening, and thank you very much, the board, for giving me an opportunity...
You need to lift the mic up close to your mouth, please.
Is that better?
You can just... Yes.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with the board tonight. I represent the Riverside H. Convy Neighborhood Group, and I come today to ask the board, in the name of the humanities and all that is compassionate regarding human life, that you offer not a rent freeze, but a rent reduction. Are you aware that there are many of us who did not get the rent freeze this year? The landlord did not allow it, so we still don't have any reduction or any relief on our rent. And a few months ago, I attended a real estate investors forum here in New York, and the guest speaker was the CEO of Blackstone, who recently purchased Starbuck's in town. And in his speech there, he stated that New York City landlords are laughing at us, the tenants. He thinks that the rental market in New York is the biggest Ponzi scheme of all. In New York, life is very bleak for us right now. If you've spoken with friends or acquaintances of late, you hear that the mass exodus of the middle class leaving New York. Policemen, firemen, schoolteachers, hospital workers, salespeople, even General Motors and IBM have closed shop in New York. They're looking for states that offer better affordable rates for housing, cities that will allow their employees to work and live there. In New York, life is very bleak right now. The average income, the rent, is $2,000, $3,000 a month. The maximum unemployment compensation is $1,900. The maximum social security benefit retirement is $2,000. So if you have a $2,000 or $3,000 rent, you are really in trouble. If you get sick, if you become unemployed, or if you are senior, you could be facing eviction within two months. I myself personally, I lived in an apartment that, 10 years ago, the rent was $638 in 2006. Today, the rent is $2,000. And I'm asking the board for a $500 reduction on that rent, because that would have exceeded $1,000 raised in the last 10 years. And I think if the landlord could get a 50% increase off that rent in the past 10 years, and the tenant could get a 50% reduction off the legal rent now, we'd all be in a better place. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Gooden? No, no questions. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Jones.
Roman Ziegler. Roman Ziegler. At CCRP meeting, Frank Royal, Doug Young, A.L., Chairman. Royal. Indicate police provide bread and butter for district attorney. District attorney indicate police does not provide bread and butter for district attorney. Corporation counsel knock on all tenant's door. Advice put developer off property. Interview Mr. Reed, Mr. Reed Building Administration. Building Administration. Developer run Chinese man, bank scrutiny director. Developer tell Chinaman, bank scrutiny director. Third attempt voting back, no vote for third. Developer regularly attack plumbing contractor on job. Plumbing contractor hired and paid by New York City Government. CCRP sendin' Jones back to corporation counsel. Reader remain. Corporation counsel officer indicate some of, some of, some of it is not the mistake.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mika Lasher? Micah? I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing it. What's the correct pronunciation? Micah? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Micah Lasher. Most recently, I served as Chief of Staff to the New York State Attorney General, but I testified here in my personal capacity as a candidate for state senate for the 1st district, which is home to more rent-regulated apartments than any other district in the state. These homes and the affordability of our neighborhoods are under threat now more than ever. We have hemorrhaged rent-regulated housing as a result of vacancy deregulation, the eviction bonus, and other provisions of law enacted with the behest of landlords. Tenants are being harassed out of their homes by extrudeless landlords, some of whom we prosecuted in the Attorney General's office, and they are being priced out of their homes because of the chronic and severe housing shortage that persists and which is your responsibility to mitigate. As former Rent Guidelines Board Executive Director Timothy Collins has detailed, the board has over the last two decades dramatically overcompensated landlords, even allowing for profits to go up with inflation. RGV increases exceeded what was necessary to keep owners' goal by 53%. This unjustified wealth transfer handed windfall profits to landlords without even pausing to correct for overstating cost predictions. You can begin to address this now and should respectfully feel obligated to do so. A rent lowback of 2% for 2-year leases and 4% for 1-year leases would move the ratio of landlord's costs to income to just under 64%. That is where it covered from 2005 to 2011. This is not a radical proposal, it is merely fair. In 2015, landlords' profits, as calculated by that ratio, hit a 12-year target, also at a record high as our homeless population. What kind of city allows this? We should all ask that question as a moral, but you need not answer it to justify a rent lowback. You need only look at the numbers. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see if we have any questions. Any questions for the speaker? No questions. Thank you. The next three speakers will be Kathryn Nixon, Graham Suaro, and Rajra Kugur. Does the mic come out? Can she sit down? Okay. I'll ask her. And Ms. Nixon, would you prefer to sit while you testify, because the mic can come out of the holder?
Here's to the lesson for the people, U23.
Could you speak into the microphone, please?
My name is Kathryn Mel Nixon. I'm World War I veteran. Father was in World War I, was called a Harlem Hellfire, the 369. I am in the documentary of the Harlem Hellfighters. Speaking in behalf of veterans and veterans' families, the federal government, all veterans and veterans' families, for the terrible treatment they received when they came home. My father passed away when I was two years old. Our family was put out on the street almost every month because my mother's penny check did not come regularly. It came any time of the month, from the 1st to the 31st. We were dispossessed, all of us put out on the sidewalk. No such thing as a housing court. The nightmare went on for almost 30 or 40 years. Through God's mercy and church and family, my two brothers survived, who were in military also now deceased. I am a widow of a marine veteran. After housing court came into existence, I had been in court not for any court of mine, but because the landlord had violated. The rent was reduced. The landlord took it to court and was ready that he'd get the money back. But something moved out. I stayed at court. I put my rent aside. For three years, I was in housing court. Finally, I won and stayed and paid my rent. Today, this family has the opportunity to do the right thing, this for the tenants who have been struggling financially, physically, and mentally. Do the right thing for the tenants. Since then, Kathryn, the voice, I'm 95 years old.
Thank you.
It's going to be tough to follow. Uh... Can you hear me? Good evening. Hi, my name is Graham Suaro. I am president in Gooden. I have rent-stabilized tenants, and I didn't even expect to be speaking tonight, so I don't have anything formal. Basically, I just wanted to encourage you to vote for a rent lowback. My neighbors and I have been rent-rolling for years, and it's been extremely difficult. I don't have kids, so my neighbors and friends that have kids, two, three kids, I don't know how they do. If everybody was time and from what I mean, what Mr. Stringer said, what others have said, if there's any time to do a rent lowback, if there's any time that you could give us some relief, this is the time to do it. And I'm asking you to please, please consider that. I don't know how much more to say, you know, you know what's going on in the city, so please consider that rent lowback.
Thank you, Mr. Suaro. Rajra Kugur? Did I pronounce that correctly?
My name is... My name is Rajra Kugur.
Kugur?
Yes. Um, Scott, you mentioned a figure of 57,000 people in homeless shelters. I checked on the web list today, it was 60,000, over 60,000. I'm sure you've heard some testimony from landlords. I don't know if you've heard of a single landlord in a homeless shelter, because that person can't afford to meet their shelter costs. Not one. There may be a difference of 3,000 between what Scott Stringer said and what I say. 3,000 women being more or less, that's already outrageous, because there were 3,000. 23,000 are the children, and I'm sure you know something about the traumatic effect of homelessness on children.
We're in the process of the healing. Could you please respect the speaker? Go ahead. We'll make it up.
Thanks. The traumatic effect on children of homelessness, I'm sure some of you have some awareness of. And that homelessness is a direct result of, it means suddenly rising rents, alien rent-regulated apartments over the last 20, 30 years. Homelessness has skyrocketed as a result, and every single year, people would come and say, "But we know homelessness if you raise rents." And rents are due rate, and there's more homelessness. Now, I'm here in part because I see my neighbor disappearing before my eyes. I have neighbors who, if there is not a rent lowback, they would be the same place for 35 years, where you may be aware that the apartment purpose of rent stabilization was to stabilize neighborhoods. They would have to move out. The apartment would be completely renovated, it would be taken out of rent stabilization, will then be rented to three or four students who have no commitment to the community, who will be gone, and who are not necessarily wonderful behaved as a result of having no commitment to the community. So we're just seeing our community being destroyed. At the same time that the landlord, by taking those units out of rent stabilization, is making unprecedented profits. It isn't need a raise for us, we need a lowback. The people of New York City need a lowback. These rent increases have gotten to the place where it is absolutely destroying the supply of affordable housing in New York. Because once a rent-stabilized tenant moves out, that unit is almost invariably gone. And one last thing, if I can add, if there were any, this was an example. Those landlords who claim that they're having a problem can't open their books, they have no problem doing the paperwork to get an MCI, they can certainly do the paperwork to open their books. There is no reason, there is no business where a failing, a person who's failing in their business is rewarded at the expense of hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of thousands of other women being punished, having to pay for the failure of a few. You must know the vast majority of landlords are the largest corporations, and they trot out their few that are struggling. They absolutely have recourse. The tenants have none. And on the basis of all of this, all these poor struggling landlords, tenants, 60,000 people in homeless shelters, 23,000 children in homeless shelters? What does that do to their lives? What are you doing? This is like crazy social engineering. This is like crazy social engineering. So please, a rollback. We need a rollback.
Thank you. Ben Collins, Taylor's son.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here again. Thank you for doing this event in Upper Manhattan. I think one quick thing, if you could just say for the record, for the security of that that this is a public meeting, recording devices aren't allowed, if you could let them know that they would let folks record this public event.
I'll send someone back to speak to him.
Perfect. Thank you. Tonight, I am here in my musical, in my capacity as a councilman, but as vice chair of the Progressive Caucus, which supports a rent rollback. In addition, I'm here on behalf of twenty other council members, including council members Rosales, Combo, Reynosa, Chin, Lander, Druff, Barotniks, Rose, Richards, Manchaca, Levin, Bean, Mendez, Gentile, Johnson, Gibson, Miller, Ben Kramer, Rodriguez, Eugene, and more. We will be submitting those letters, which you should have, and we wanted to thank you for holding this hearing in all four boroughs, including Upper Manhattan. Both tenants and landlords shared their personal experiences of trying to stay in their homes, keeping their units both affordable and affordable. In the past, the Rent Guidelines Board gave far more attention to landlords' costs than tenants' ability to pay. The board estimated landlords' fixed costs and void of rent increases that far off trip the growth of the local economy. The board's good work for the past two years has begun to address the issues, but there's more to do, and this year, we are asking for a fair balance for tenants and landlords, which means a rent rollback. When compared to the data from the Department of Finance reported by landlords themselves, the price index of operating cost, the pie off actually overstated landlords' costs by eleven percent since two thousand and five, so this negative pie off is still an underestimation, and landlords' costs are even lower than the already negative one point two percent suggests. These are excerpts from the letter. The board has also received a show that the net operating income for landlords has increased from tenth year in a row, rental income for landlords rose by four point eight percent, the total income for landlords rose by four point nine percent. All these data points show that the rent rollback is feasible, warranted, logical, and fair. I am just trying to summarize the points. The Rent Guidelines Board must be in favor of a rent rollback. Since the market crash in two thousand and eight, tenants faced the average yearly increase of three point one percent, while the annual national asking rent increase during the period was only point six percent. Furthermore, we are suffering from the highest rent hurdles ever recorded. The median amount of rent paid by stabilized tenants has increased to thirty-six point four percent of household income. In two thousand and fourteen, alone, average rent collections in stabilized buildings rose by three point five percent. This unbearable rent burden leads to tenant displacement, as we saw two hundred and twenty-one thousand nine hundred eighty-eight evictions and possessions. In two thousand and fifteen, forty-three percent were evictions of rent stabilized tenants. These numbers are not sustainable and bring New York to the verge of being an exorbitant, re-priced city. We, the pre-city members, the city council, share the mayor's goal to preserve under twenty thousand units of affordable housing over the next decade. In order to achieve this goal, significant actions must be taken to protect tenants. Directly course, the city's rent stabilization program will preserve as many units of affordable housing as possible. We implore you to vote for a rent rollback on June twenty-seventh, two thousand and sixteen. Thank you for allowing me to overage to speak on behalf of twenty-one council members, including myself. Happy to take any questions if they're hard.
Let's see if there are any questions. Any questions? There's a question.
Yeah, I just, so we've heard from about a half dozen to a dozen small property owners who say, whatever rent rollback we do will, you know, destroy my building, I will make my livelihood. What do you say to an owner who makes those allegations, and what do you say to the city about, you know, what the city and the city's future is about in relationship to supporting rent rollback?
Sure, I'm just going to consult an email from my landlord tenant board that I work with, from the Urban Justice Center. And in fact, many of the council members that you know have clinics with the Urban Justice Center where you are facing tough situations with your landlord. So if a landlord has a problem, they can apply for a hardship increase from the D H C R. They can get a loan interest loan from H P D, or they can enter a regulatory agreement with H P D and even get tax abatements. That being said, as an elected official, I've had new construction ask for tax abatements in the form of four-twenty-one A, J fifty-one, and others, and I've had some other new construction. But I've never had a rent stabilized owner, and I have only twenty-one, twenty-nine thousand units, come to my district office, tell me that they weren't able to make enough money, and ask for my support in seeking funding from H P D. It just hasn't happened. That being said, I think, to the extent that you find something particularly compelling from a landlord, if they engage in this process and they say yes, they should release that information so you can actually see what's going on. I'm actually, I, it's, I'm not used to being on the side of the hearing. I'm curious to learn from H P D how many landlords who are here asking for a rent increase have actually taken advantage of the D H C R, H P D programs. I do know we've set aside so much money in the councils to support landlords. Who do you want to put forward for affordable housing?
Just so you know, on the D H C R process, zero volumes applied for a hardship increase in two thousand and fifteen.
Thank you, and we are lucky to have you and so many of the other members and your expertise on the Rent Guidelines Board.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Sylvia?
Yeah, councilmember. Yeah, councilmember, could you, you alluded to this a little bit before, but could you just outline for us, from the city council's perspective, you know, we, we're hearing a lot of testimony, we have a fairly narrow slice of, you know, what the board can do. Could you just elaborate a little bit from the city council's perspective? What are the major measures that you see would be complementing what the board might do to deal with the affordability challenge?
We just passed the most broad-staking mandatory increase in housing program in the country, and the zoning moving forward will create more rent stabilized units throughout the city, and we will need to open a partnership with the Rent Guidelines Board so that as we create affordable housing, we need to create a hundred and eighty thousand new units in the next ten years under the mayor's mandate. We will need to make sure that the Rent Guidelines Board continues to keep the rents affordable. Otherwise, if we continue to see rents increases that outpace inflation and income increases throughout the population, then all that affordable housing will no longer be affordable to anyone. So it is a clear partnership. You have a strong power over rents and rent stabilized housing, which will be a result of M I H, so we, it is a partnership, and we thank you.
Any other questions?
What do you think, thank you. What do you think is our responsibility as a board to be able to maintain those, that new construction and the current taco of rent stabilized units we have?
Rent rollback. That's, that's the quick answer. From two thousand and five through two thousand and thirteen, the rent increases outpaced inflation. I was disappointed to see a vote for a rent freeze earlier, and that is a vote that is nonbinding. The pie off is actually a negative this year. Rents, landlords are reporting four and a half percent and above increases in profits. This is the year for your rent rollback, so that tenants can afford to live here, and even with that rent rollback, I'll be here next year asking for another rent rollback and a rent freeze until we achieve parity. I think according to the number from the testimony I submitted to you, you'd be, the Rank Guidelines Board, previous increases before this, Rank Guidelines Board has carved its constitution, outpaced inflation by about seventeen percent, which comes out to about fifteen hundred dollars more a year in rent that folks could be spending on medication, food, or even education, that's about the same price as going to puberty, and getting a higher degree, and being able to do anything you want with your life.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for having me.
Thank you. The next three speakers will be Daniel Carpen, Abraham Musaf, and Desenya Guber.
My name is Daniel Carpen, K A R P B N, I reside at Free Harbor Hill Drive, Huntington, New York, I own my own house. I'm a professional engineer, and I specialize in energy conservation engineering. I didn't bring you today, but I did have a case study of a landlord with six units in Queens. He had an inefficient steam heating system that was banging and costing a lot of money. It was costing thirteen thousand dollars a year for heat and hot water in the six unit building. He hired the energy conservation engineer to cut costs. We took out four hundred thousand B T U steam boiler and put in what was generated at the eighty thousand B T U steam because the witnesses had upgraded, because the boiler was terribly energy inefficient. Then we put in a separate domestic hot water heater fueled by natural gas, where the condenser units are incredibly efficient. He cut his costs from thirteen thousand dollars a year down to three thousand dollars a year. He got his money back in two years, which is extraordinary return on investment in energy conservation engineering. On Wednesday, he's going to be hearing before the city council on changing state city energy conservation construction code. Unfortunately, those hearings do not address the replacement of old, inefficient, oversized boilers with more efficient equipment. The requirements to downsized boilers for new installations are not in the code that's being considered by the city council. I applied to the Building's Department to be on the committee through Vice Call. They rejected me. Then I applied to the Building's Department on the food nation law, throw lists to those people who are on supposedly in the community. I was told I couldn't get the list, and they discredited me. Moreover, when I tried to attend these meetings as an observer sitting back, they refused to allow me to do so. I consider that an incredible piece of power by the Building's Department.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions to make?
No questions. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Yes, my name is Abraham Musaf, and I'm a small local in Alston, in Midtown West. I don't know where those conditions, constantly people come with those crazy numbers that they hold over the ground. I have proof here. From last year, my tax was seventy-two thousand dollars. This year went up eighty-four thousand dollars, and the reason for that, because I have two tenants that just arrived, who are still in peace, rent control to two old ladies that lived like sixty-seven years in the country. I have no problem with them, they pay very, 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 very well. So my money went up twenty thousand dollars. My tax up went twelve thousand dollars. So I guess this is maybe one and a half percent. I guess twelve and a half, twelve and a half, twelve thousand dollars went up from twenty thousand dollars I gave. So this probably right, my compensation is right, it's one and a half percent, right? That's the increase in taxes from seventy to eighty-four. I'll give you this, this is really difficult, all of it is difficult. My, my insurance, okay? I'll give you the insurance. The insurance, two thousand and thirteen was thirteen thousand, two thousand and fourteen was fourteen thousand, two thousand and fifteen, sixteen, fourteen, whatever, twenty-two thousand. Last year, twenty-nine. This year, forty thousand dollars. So what is the increase? This is two percent? I don't understand. From the year before was thirteen thousand dollars, four, five years before, now it's a forty thousand dollars. And I have right proof here, I would like to show it to you, please, and look at it and write me my book. I don't understand how they say the increase went up just from there. By the way, I feel very bad for people here, regardless of anything. They deserve a break, they deserve anything but help by the government, but not from the back of the landlord. The landlord is any other enterprise like anything else, like supermarket, strivers, any store, Asper, everybody there, who are trying to make money. I work seventeen, eighteen hours a day, I work seven days a week, my YouTube, and I do that, I put on a line, you don't see my, any other my tenant coming to complain, then I can give you a list of my tenants, you can go any of my tenants, whatever they deserve, they did, they're done, I'm with you. The same day, the next day, I program, I give you the best services possible, and I don't give you a day hundred dollars, or they pay thousands of dollars, doesn't make any sense. Those people should deserve a break. They born this country, they work hard, have enough, fine, but the government should help, they should not put old government in the landlord. Simple.
Thank you. Is there any questions? You have a question?
Yeah, I do appreciate you coming to testify, and, hey, it sounds like, you know, you're a really good landlord and a tenant as well. I just want to make sure you're saying, are your, to your, is your income exceed your expenses each fiscal year, which creates care for you?
No, no, my income exceeds my expenses, yes, but if I am deserving of money out of this, first of all, investment, the second, I took twenty hours to keep my hand in perfect shape. Understand? But I deserve a money for the building, I put eighty thousand dollars out, because the team was sad, you have to really invest in them from the basics, or you could just work, you still have to, and enforce them.
I do appreciate you putting the money and time into the building, and I'm glad you can make see your expenses, but there are programs available through H P D.
I just, I'm not, yeah, I'm saying, I never meant to the government help.
I'm just saying, if you do need support, there's ways to get additional support. So like you're saying, like, if you feel like, like, there are millions of tenants who, you know, need a rent freeze or a rent rollback, if you feel like that doesn't work for your building, there are programs available to assist you as a small property owner.
Okay, now, my, my, my insurance is forty thousand dollars. I don't have the money to pay. I have maybe ten thousand dollars, I'm waiting for the next landlord, maybe I'll make it, but then it's prices all over the place. By the end of the year, I may be willing to couple of bucks, maybe to improve my investment, the time I put, this is not.
Well, then you can apply for a hardship increase at the H C R, and there's a, there's a process available to you, just so you know, that if you want to apply for a hardship, if you, if you don't, you don't feel like you're making good enough return, you can, you can apply at H C R for a hardship increase, which will help you. And I understand your problem, and we're concerned about you, but we're also concerned about the millions of tenants and the fifty thousand, fifty-seven thousand homeless individuals who have to balance that out.
I understand that. I just saw it in the newspaper today, they found a fraud from the medical fraud, a hundred and eighty-seven million dollars, people were siphoning out of the, of the medical fraud. This, a hundred and eighty-seven thousand, could help people here that they need help. And there is, I'm pretty sure there's other fraud happening, and something that's going under the radar in property management.
Unfortunately, we only control the rent increases for the Rent Guidelines Board, and we have a system in Albany that's really dysfunctional, and we can't get good laws passed in Albany, but this is something that will be concrete for millions of tenants in New York City.
Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Good evening, Ms. Guber.
Thank you for having us hearing uptown in Harlem. Next year, we're going to pack this room. My name is Elsenia Guber, I'm on behalf of tenants and neighbors in the Alliance of Tenant Power. On behalf of the tenants we serve and support, I'm here to request that rent state lights tenants receive a rent rollback this year. Last year, this board made history with a zero percent increase for one-year leases. Let's make bigger history, do the right thing with a rent rollback. There are two point five million rent state lights tenants living in approximately one million apartments in New York City. I do have to tell you that tenants are heavily rent burdened. You've seen the statistics. In communities like East, Central, West, Park, and Washington Heights, that burden is even more pronounced. During the twelve long years of the previous administration, tenants received increases that were way out of line in the price and benefits of operating costs, which amounted to a complete landlord giveaway. As you've heard before, at the High End Session, tenants clearly saved an eight point five percent increase for two-year leases, which was way out of line. As my friend Paul Levy said at the Bronx hearing last week, we don't mind landlords making a profit, but we do mind them making a killing, which is what happened over twelve long years of the former mayor. This year, the pie off is negative. The notion that landlords are not making enough money to operate their buildings as well as receive a profit is ludicrous. If that were the case, they would, as any rational person, would stop investing in purchasing. Additionally, twenty-eight Additionally, 28% of all rent-regulated tenants have preferential rents. And what I haven't seen as a tenant association president, well, happened this year and last year, is that when preferential rent tenants receive their leases, they are seeing increases of up to 10%. This means that landlords are getting their money. At tenants and neighbors, we get calls constantly from tenants seeking information about how to fight NCIAs. As landlords with rent-stabilized buildings some recently purchased begin a process of revamping with major capital improvements, in many cases where the building infrastructures have been neglected for years and then charged tenants for. These NCIAs are permanent on tenants' rent, which means that after, after 6% increases added with each year. This is unconscionable. Further, and I'm almost done, according to a recent study by the Community Service Society, making the rent of 83 million in inflation-adjusted increases from 2011 to 2014, Rent Guidelines Board increases accounted for 25%, 48% K from vacancy bonuses, 10% during occupancy, which is NCIAs, and 14% from other increases during vacancy. I know the rent laws, and I, I know the rent laws, and I am clear that you have nothing to do with NCIAs, vacancy bonuses, or preferential rents, except that landlords are getting their money in multiple ways, tenant incomes are stagnant, and you have the power to make this right. We asked for a rent rollback.
Thank you. The next three speakers are Betsy Eichel, Elaine Williams, and Robert DeSir. Betsy Eichel?
Good evening. My name is Betsy Eichel, and I am a tenant organizer at Housing Counseling Coordinators. I have many tenants who are struggling to remain in their apartments in neighborhoods that are more vulnerable to anyone who's not welcome. These tenants are artists, teachers, social workers, seniors, immigrants, and members of the LGBTQ community. They adhere enormously to their neighborhoods. But rent-regulated tenants on the Upper West Side, Hell's Kitchen, and Chelsea, and Harlem, of course, face numerous pressures. Rents increase dramatically over the years, while wages have remained stagnant. Predatory, limited by a bit of corporations, and private equity firms are buying, going into far beyond the current rent rollback sustaining, creating a twisted incentive to get low-paying tenants out. Landlords are getting more creative in their methods of harassment. Tenants who cannot make it to testify occurred to me to share their experiences of how rent increasing the harassment that impacted their lives. One tenant told me that a year, the community's rent-stabilized neighbors lived in a boat construction site, while the vacant units were converted into condos. Those condos are now often rented to tourists on a repeat, which makes the long-term tenants feel unsafe, and means that the stress they went through was not even resulting in more long-term housing. In his works, during the construction phase, the rent-stabilized tenants lived in a dust hole with every cost of a breach of warranty, habitability of our uses. Can I, uh, the management, excuse me, never offered any rent payment, no holiday, and in fact, would be more than happy to continue harassing us so that we can leave. The mannequin and other landlords who are exploited and gaming systems should not be getting any rent increase whatsoever. Other tenants have seen their apartments as vaguely deregulated, with little recourse available to them. Still others who are far over 3% of their incoming rent, with little to show, they deserve a rollback. I'll let another tenant offer closing remarks. New York City needs to prove that the city is not run by the real estate lobby, but is a city that supports its citizens. And I just wanted to add one other thing. Our organization has a weatherization program that can help make buildings green and has lower costs for many buildings in our neighborhood. So it's, it's very frustrating for me as a tenant advocate to hear that, you know, there's just nothing that landlords can do, because there's many, many sources out there, and it's, it should not be the tenant advocate's ability, responsibility to bring those to landlords. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good Betsy. Just heard a lot about Airbnb in the last couple of hearings. Can you talk about what you, your organization's doing around Airbnb, and what the tenants can use to do around Airbnb to stop this in, in New York City?
Sure. Well, I, I, first I have to say that the issue of long-term, mostly rent-regulated apartments into hotels has predates the creation of Airbnb. Tenants were coming to HCC about this in, you know, 2005, 2006. Our organization is located in Hell's Kitchen, which is obviously a very attractive area to tourists. But what we see is not what Airbnb touts, which is, oh, people use the service to supplement their rent or their mortgage. I work with several buildings where almost, almost the entire building is almost empty. There's just a couple of rent-stabilized tenants left, and they, of course, is a loss of housing to the community, which we will really never get back, despite, you know, having buildings, having a lot of construction in our neighborhood.
And who's putting those apartments up out there?
It's, it's the landlords that do it. And in some buildings, it's continued, a continuation of warehousing units, of just keeping them unrented for years. But now they have even more incentive to not let them to long-term tenants, because they make a lot of money, and it's a lot less work for them to maintain the apartment. And in addition to the loss of housing, it's, there's good situations where there's been essentially kind of blockos in these apartments, and, you know, tenants have no idea who has the keys. And also, the super and the other people that are supposed to work for the tenants end up kind of spending, spending much more time preparing guest rooms and catering to them, which results in a lot of harassment and lack of services for tenants.
So can you tell me what you're doing legislatively? Would you have done legislatively around Airbnb?
Sure. Well, 2010, I believe, Gail Brewer, who was the city councilwoman at the time, African Borough President, who's probably met most everybody in this room, she passed a legal hotel law, which, I, I don't know the kind of legal specifics of it, but it made it very clear that to rent out a unit for less than 30 days was against the rent stabilization code, and, or, or anyone who was bound to be doing that would face pretty high fines. And on, kind of building on top of that, a bill was recently passed in the House and the Senate through Senator Rosenthal, who also represents the Upper West Side and Hell's Kitchen, that meaning advertising a full unit illegal, and would also result in fines.
And how many units do you think are being taken off the market by landlords for doing this? Do you have a guest room in that?
I don't, I don't. But I know it's thousands. It's, it's, it's very, very visible in our community.
Thank you.
Thank you, Elaine Williams.
Good evening, Ms. Williams. My name is Elaine Williams, and I have worked in the Lenox Terrace Development in Harlem on 32nd Street, between Lenox Avenue and Fifth Avenue for 54 years. I am a member of the Lenox Terrace Association of Concerned Tenants, and a board member of tenants and neighbors, a housing advocacy organization. I am a chairperson for a really rent rollback. My son and my granddaughter were raised in a complex, where we lived, and it was expected they, they too would live and raise their parents in the same community, but that is not the case. Because of escalating rents, fraud, by loopholes in the landlords, such as 20% vacancy bonus, preferential rents, NCIAs, and ILO, and compounded by the selection of tenants who they know will be short-term tenants, such as students, people doing hospital residency, and young single people are not looking for long-term tenants. We have tenants whose families have a large, looking to transfer to a larger apartment, but cannot, due to the high bills, having to move across the river to Jersey or to other states. Owners had been awarded rent increases every year, but for the last year, when the mortgage for the mortgage was taken, the mortgage was the one, but only to one-year leases. They still received a 2% increase on two-year leases. However, let me remind this board that in 2010, the RGI did increase all rent-stabilized apartments to a minimum monthly reward of $1,000. And for me, and for a lot of tenants, that was a $200 increase per year, that's 25%. Plus, the 2.25% increase for one-year leases, and 4.5% for two-year leases. The following year, 9/11 happened, and the bomb fell out of the cloud, John's River, businesses at the club, William's, the partners have been struggling in their jobs, not receiving solid earnings, implied to angels, and for seniors receiving social security incentives, they have remained flat. With the RGI keeps supporting increases to owners that are not substantially, but by management of me. If you want a rent rollback, you deserve a rent rollback.
Thank you.